Please keep all cell phones off or on vibrate. Please remain standing for a period and play as usual.
Call this meeting over, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Brad Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Bob Deason to come forward and say the invocation.
Would you bow with me in prayer? Father in heaven, thank you for being our God that watches over us and keeps us. We're thankful, Father, for every day that you give us and the beauties of it and the meaning for it. We're thankful, Father, for this assembly tonight, for each one that is represented here who are representing someone else. We're thankful, Father, for their courage, for their knowledge and wisdom, and we pray that it will be exhibited here in this meeting in a few minutes. We're thankful, Father, that you give us opportunity to live in this country, a country that is free and a country in which we can truly love. And even to the point, Father, of our state and our county and our town. We pray that it would be a blessing and we'll help it in all that it stands for. We pray, Father, we might be the example that others need in order to draw closer to them. We're thankful for your word. Pray we will always abide by it, that you forgive each one of us of our ignorance and our weakness, and may we strive for the knowledge that we ought to have before thee that's there. Thankful, God, for every air that we breathe. Bless these men who are fixing to make their wishes known. May the best come of it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'll now turn it over to Mr. Scott Kelly for our player.
Good evening, everybody. Good to have Mark Agro. He brought three great voice eloquism tonight, and they're going to lead us in our pledge. Okay, guys, step four. We have Darren Weitzel, Noah Agro, and Noah Greer. Anytime you're ready, guys, we'll follow you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Well, now, I ask the part called the road.
Here.
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 Randy England.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Here.
Brad Hillis.
Here.
James Hines.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Kenny Moffett.
Here.
Cam Montgomery.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Chris Rippey.
Here.
Kristi Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble. Tommy Savage.
Here.
Donna Smith. Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
I got 23 present. Will now accept a motion to adopt their docket. Got a motion by Michael Bell, second by Mr. Dotson. Anybody who want to speak to?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bob.
I'd like to remove item eight, resolution zero one dash C Y dash twenty-three. We need to remove this item at this time. We've discovered that there's a conflict with the charter and this resolution.
So, we've got a motion to amend. I hear a second. Got a second from Mr. Cole Taylor. Any discussion on amending the docket to remove this resolution? All those in favor? Yes, this would be just delaying.
I don't know.
That committee will take that up. Alright, so now we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, we're back on the original docket with that removed from it. All those in favor of approving their docket, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes twenty-three zero. We'll now entertain reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion. We dismiss reading meetings except on as presented.
I've got a motion by Mr. Anglin. Got a second by Mr. Wiltshire. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes twenty-three zero. Alright, we'll move right on down to elected official reports. Mr. Ron Lee, would you present our planning commissioner report?
Yes, sir. The commission's got the report in the package. If there's any questions between Mr. Glenn and I, we'll try our best to answer.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Cole Taylor. Got a second by Mr. Stout. Is there any questions about the planning commissioner report? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, thank you, Ron. Ms. Andrea Fox, we're ready for the health department report.
You guys should have my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Ms. Andrea, I have a quick question. On the vaccine, vaccines that are administered between October and December. I've got a list of vaccines. There are no COVID vaccines administered or there are none administered between October and December 2022?
I just don't put those on the report. The numbers obviously have dropped greatly, but there have been some administered for us.
Thank you.
I hear a motion, we approve the report.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion by Gary. We got a second by Tommy Savage. Any more questions for Ms. Fox about the health department? If no one has any more questions, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes twenty-three zero.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Sherri Bradley, Warren County Animal Report.
You folks should have my numbers. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Blaine, second by Mr. Glenn. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Bradley? If no one has any questions, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes twenty-three zero. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Now, we're up to the member of Warren County Industrial Board, Mr. Janine Nafroda.
So, are there any questions on the financials that you all received?
Could we get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Bell. Got a second by Kristi Ross. Now, any questions on the financial report? Or any other questions?
I do need to clarify one thing that was reported, that the Novaris building, which you'll see on the second line item, what that, what we got for that, that was actually sold for 3.7 million. The payoff was the 1.2 million that we got. Okay? I also wanted to address, if it pleases, a couple of things, if I could? Okay. We, because there's a lot of new commissioners, I think that it would behoove all of us to know what the industrial development board does and why we exist. We work under Tennessee Code Annotated seven dash five-three dash one oh one. So, if you read through that, and it's not exciting reading, but it's important reading to understand how we function and what our purpose is. And specifically, or not specifically, but importantly in that, is section seven dash five-three dash three oh five, which talks about the pilot programs that we do, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. Also, in that state code, you will see that the industrial development board serves terms of six years, and that commissioners and aldermen cannot hold positions on the board because of the conflict of interest that it proposes. We are allowed to negotiate with private companies, whereas the county commission is not allowed to do that because of conflict of interest. So, that is what, to answer some of the things that were asked in the paper, is why I wanted to bring that up. We negotiate deals and incentives to private industries and companies, and I think that it would be a good idea for us to maybe have a liaison committee. This is a proposition that you guys can think about between the county commission, the city alderman, when it involves the city and the industrial development board, so that there can be more transparency and education and information on your end and on our end, so that we can understand the challenges that you may have with something that we want to propose, and we can understand the challenges that you have, and you can understand how we do it, what our strategy is and what our procedures are. And I think if we just educate each other and understand each other better, this can go a lot smoother than it currently, the current environment that we've had. Any questions for me?
Ms. Nafroda.
Yes.
I've spoke to Robert Bratcher about this, and one thing I wanted to know about was, is it possible for there to be county commissioners or chairman of certain committees to be representatives on the IDB board? In other words, they're not members, they're representatives, they're unpaid representatives, that basically, basically could be part of the meetings, but they would not be able to vote?
Yeah, well, we're all unpaid.
Right.
And I don't know the answer to that question. Do you know, Robert? We could have non-voting members?
The IDBs of public board and commissioners are welcome to attend. There is a conflict that would preclude them from actually being on board, so they would not be able to vote, and the board itself could restrict communication or debate if they wanted to, but there's certainly no reason they couldn't attend.
Well, and my specific question is exactly what I said. Could there be a representative of the commission on that board? Not a member, but a representative?
Well, not on the board, so to speak. Being on the board means you're a member of the board, and they couldn't be on the board, voting or not. They could attend the meetings and be delegated to attend all the meetings to be informational, but...
That's what I'm talking about. That's, that's what I'm talking about. You know, for instance, if the chairman of economic agriculture development, if we decided as a commission that that chairman would be the representative on the IDB, they wouldn't be able to vote, but they could go to the meetings, and they would be somebody that we could contact if we had questions that they could answer.
Sure.
That's what I was getting at.
So, we have open meetings every third Thursday at 1:15 at the Chamber of Commerce Building. I encourage all of you to attend as many of those meetings as you can, so you can hear what we are discussing and the procedures that we're discussing, what we have in the works, who's called and asked, been interested in our county. The more you know, then the more you can understand, and the more we know about your procedures, the more we can understand. So, I'm hoping that we can form this coherent relationship and understand that we are not at cross purposes with each other. We are to help Warren County grow.
Mr. Kelly, if you want to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, could that commissioner, the chairman commissioner, who could be on, not on the board, but at the meeting, he can participate in the meeting? Could he speak?
Well, anybody can speak at the meetings. It's a, it's a public open forum, so sure. Now, whether those, whether questions could get answered in a public forum, it would be just like in your public forum. You know, it may be something that has to be answered not in the public forum, but he could get the answers. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. It's been brought up a couple of times about a commissioner being on the committee. I don't think that's necessary, because it is a public meeting, and all 24 of us is welcome to come if we were able to be there. So, any of us can be there and be informed. That's not, that's not the issue. The issue is that the pilots is spending taxpayers' money or costing the taxpayers' money, if you want to look at it that way. And we just need a little more oversight with that. It, it, this is not intended, this resolution was not intended to impede or control or take over or anything. It was just to allow the commission to have a little more oversight of the taxpayers' money, which we are saddled with, you know, overseeing and controlling for the most efficiently way we can spend it. The, this is not about the Bridgestone deal either. The Bridgestone deal just opened up some eyes over some pilots that we have that are, that are on the stray. Do you know how many pilot, active pilot programs you have?
I believe that we have four. I believe, and that would include the current, which is, Novaris, which is not current right now. It would, but, so the next person that comes in may want, may or may not want a pilot. But what we have right now is Dan Plastics, the Oster Building, and Samson. Yeah, and then we do have Bridgestone, but that hasn't started. That's still currently under the old pilot until they reach that certain date of completion, and then the new pilot would kick in on that.
Okay, that, that brings up a point that we know, everyone in this room knows that we have one of these companies that have not lived up to their obligations.
Correct.
It would be, it would be beneficial to, to people to have a look at those pilots to know, who, who is overseeing that if they're not fulfilling their obligations or if they're behind on their money? Who is the one that's overseeing it to make the termination of those contracts?
Okay, so that gets looked at every year, year at the end of the calendar year. The companies themselves have to send a fiscal report to the state treasurer every year to show if they are, if they are or not compliant with their pilot. So, that goes to its own audit at the state. And then, we bill them and check in December. It gets paid in either January, or actually, I think, I think we bill them in January at the end of the year, and then it gets paid in February. If they are not compliant, then we have to go back to the original contract for the pilot and see what terms were set up in that original agreement, and then abide by those terms. So, what I think I need to get to all the commissioners is a copy of each of the current pilots that we have, the, the agreement, and then their latest statement as to where they are, whether they are current and upholding their end of the deal or not. And as far as we have right now, there's only one that isn't. And once you read that contract, you'll understand a little bit better why, you'll understand a little bit better as to what we're doing.
What you explained to me the other day, I still can't comprehend, that that's a deal. And I would love to see that in writing. If that's a deal, I would like to know who the person was that wrote that contract.
Yes, and that is included on that contract. Yes, okay.
Any?
Yeah.
Mr. Nafroda. One question. Well, I had a few questions, but Commissioner Bowden kind of hit a few of my spots. Why did the pilot that MPC had, whenever they sold to Novaris, why did that pilot transfer over to them?
Um...
With a new company coming in and buying that? I mean, is that how a pilot works? They just pick it right up?
No. From, are you, you're asking why the MPC pilot transferred to Novaris? Or why the Novaris pilot is tran...
No, I don't know.
Okay, I don't know the answer to that. And no, typically pilots do not transfer. No, it's a new negotiation every time.
Do you have a seat while we fill out the...
Yes.
Yeah, I don't care what anybody says. I'll never not stand for the county commission not having oversight of anything that has to do with taxpayer dollars. Never. Anything that has to do with a taxpayer dollar, this county, this 24-person body needs to have oversight of it and to vote on some final decisions of it. I'll never not support something that says any otherwise. I think that we need to have the oversight of it, because we've talked many times. And I, like Mr. Bowden said, this resolution that he come up with or that, that committee come up with, it's not to take away power, really, it's just more of, we just want to be more involved and oversight of it, you know? And because I do feel like that there is some problems in our, I get, well, with y'all's oversight of these people that are not upholding their contracts. You know, I know the Novaris deal, if I'm not mistaken, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, they shut their doors in May, correct?
I don't know.
I think I'm right on that, I think. I think they shut their doors in May, and so from May to December, they should have been paying 100% of tax on, you know, because they wasn't upholding their contract, if I'm not, I think I'm correct on that, I'm pretty sure.
I would have to, so like I said...
I want to know who's going out here and saying, hey, you know what, you're not doing your job, but you know, we made a contract, I mean...
So, we don't do that on a monthly basis, though. So, we do it once a year. And then, once a year, once that gets paid, then if it's due to the county or city, then it gets paid to the county or city. So, it's not a monthly audit on them. It's a once-a-year audit on them, yes.
I mean, I'm good with, I see we give incentives to people to come here, give them a little incentive to come to Warren County and open up a business, but we need to make sure we're doing our job of holding, holding our feet to the fire.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
There is, TVA has, has a little mini seminar that they do, that they will come in and explain to the industrial development board, the county commission, the city alderman, exactly what an economic development board does and what pilots do. So, I'm going to set up a time with TVA, depending on their schedule, to have that seminar held here in Warren County, and we will send out invitations with the time for every commissioner and alderman to attend. Please attend that, so that you can be more educated, and hopefully, we can work this out.
One more question, and I'll leave you alone.
Sure, sure.
And this is, this could be just hearsay, but you know how hearsay is sometimes. I was told by somebody, and don't know how true it is, so I may, I'm going to ask you, because you're the chairman. I was told that one of the companies that has a pilot with us is paying just the fine because they're not upholding their contract because it's cheaper.
To my knowledge and what I have looked through in this paperwork, that is not the case.
I was just curious, because if that's the case, then we need to raise these fines a little higher.
So, that's going to, that's going to be the same company that we've just referred to, and once you see the contract, I think you'll understand what's going on with that and what we have to uphold, whether we want to or not.
Mr. How?
I'd like to say thank you to the IDB and the volunteers that are serving on that board. I know y'all are getting drilled right now, and we appreciate y'all's time away from y'all's families and stuff. I would like you to update us on the steel company in Morrison and sort of where we're at there. I know that we've got another reading in the town of Morrison to rezone. I think that's at the end of the month. I'm not sure the date, Terry, do you?
January 26.
Seven o'clock, the 26th, there's going to be a second reading. What is the IDB standpoint on the steel company? I know that there's pilot programs potentially there. Where are we at with that? Can you discuss that?
Well, where we're at is that we are waiting to see if that land's going to get rezoned. You know, that, we can't do really anything until we know that. And there have been incentives, there have been incentives discussed. The extent of those incentives has not been decided. I've... That is something that won't get decided without the commission's support. And that's probably all I need to say on that.
Ms. Kristi Ross?
Sorry for not standing. I like the idea of the liaison. I think that this is a wonderful way to show and transparency and start building a much-needed bridge. And I, I just want to say thank you. I know this has not been an easy transition, and I am grateful. For tonight, I've learned more probably about the IDB and county commission than we've ever learned, and I, and I wanted to say thank you for that.
Well, you're welcome.
I just want to add one thing. It's off of what Commissioner Ross said, the liaison, who, how is that going to be selected? Is that strictly selected from the IDB, or has there been any mention of that? I'm just curious.
No, I think it would be you all deciding if you want to have a liaison on our board, or not on our board, but to come to our meetings. I would love to have a whole liaison committee, but that's going to be up to, to your county executive and the city mayor, and it would be wonderful to have a committee of the chairs of your committees to come together, and we could meet, update, talk about what's going on, and really kind of keep each other in the know and support each other through, through this. That's what I would love to see. You all will have to decide if that's something you would like to see as well.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've questioned her enough, and she's doing a fantastic job, and I think we need to accept her as... job, and I think we need to accept her as who she is. She's done a great job, and let's just let her take a break.
That's something the county commission, the committee will have to be looked at with the rest of the county commission. I have, Jenny, thank you for answering people's questions, but I have a motion, a second on the floor. All that approval. I've done, got that. I'm fixing to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, pass 23. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Mr. Prater.
All right. We'll move on now to Justin Cotton's financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. I'll do my best to answer any questions at this time.
Mr. Stouts made a motion, DeHare second, got a second by Ms. Casey Owens. Any discussion on the financial report? There's no question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass 23-0. We'll move into committee reports now. Budget and finance, Ms. Christie Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget and finance has nothing to report other than it is almost budget season, and I know Commissioner Ruble's looking forward to that. He wants me to tell you.
We'll move to buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, we have a chiller out for bid. The bids are supposed to come back next Wednesday, so we'll be meeting after those bids come in for the courthouse. The security system update here and at courthouse, the work has begun a little, not a whole lot, but a little, and that's all I have to report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Economic and agriculture development?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and agriculture development has nothing else to report at this time.
Education?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The education committee met on January the 10th at the Warren County School's central office in a joint meeting with the school board. All members of the school board were present for what was planned for their quarterly workshop, which they had two main items on their agenda, which was to set goals for the next upcoming school year and to discuss a budget. But during the meeting, we had several questions asked and discussion. That included things of addressing the curriculum, the test scores, teacher salaries, bathroom usage by students, upcoming projects, and the status of the third grade reading requirement. The addition to the Centertown School for six new classrooms will be bid very soon, and they're at their highest attendance ever of 522 students. There's a lot of discussion and concern about over the third grade reading requirement. Early indicators are showing us that 70% of the third graders across the state will not pass this reading requirement, thus being held back for that school year. Many steps are being taken right now in our school system to address this and over the final weeks of the school year before this test begins to state whether they have accomplished the reading requirement. There is hope and efforts being made that this requirement will be revisited or revised. Our meeting adjourned with the workshop continuing, and we were very, very thankful and pleased with this opportunity to meet with our school board. Thank you.
Financial management will have a meeting at 8:45 Friday, this Friday, to award a bridge contract. And that's all I have on financial management, and we'll move on to health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our director, Ms. Sherry, has been working with Stacy Harvey on developing some mockups of the potential new building, and hopefully we'll have something in the next few weeks for everybody to start looking at as far as what we're trying to get implemented down there with the space that we've got. And also, I believe you and your officers are already registered for the training, the de-escalation training, and then the gun training as well. So hopefully by next month, we'll have all that completed, and then we'll bring the resolution back for a vote. That's all I got at this time. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Has your committee set any tours of other facilities that are close by, of buildings and animal shelter operations, so you can get an idea of some of their design and operations to help you in planning for this new building?
I did mention that we do have the Cookville and McKinley, they said come on up and tell you what works, what doesn't work.
Several commissioners, past and present, have went to other facilities. I have, and I know some other commissioners have as well, and we're definitely open to looking at other ones. Also, right now primarily what we're wanting to look at is what Sherry feels like we need with her experience, and then we can compare that.
We'll move on to highway and bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I've got, March or April 1, we haven't picked them up yet. We've got several tractors that we're going to sell with the boom mowers on, and a cutting truck. That's, and Randy, I think is going to do the auction. Thank you.
Policy and personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on January 9th and January 12th, and we interviewed two candidates for veteran service officer on the 9th, and we also reviewed the application for candidates for codes and environmental director. We interviewed for that position on the 12th, and we narrowed the field from seven to three. We will meet again this Thursday and interview those three. Of those that we interviewed for the veteran service officer, they both scored very close. And long story short, they're both good candidates, and they're both going to be hired. This is a good thing for our veterans, and both will be working part-time. The office will be open four days a week instead of three. And thanks to the county executive, the finance director, and the chairman of budget and finance for their help in making this happen. Those two that are going to be hired are Mark Lidle and Derek Kennimer. We're lucky to have them. It's a good day for veterans. Thank you.
Just to begin, just a little, when we interviewed these candidates, we had two real good candidates. They're both veterans, and I've been approached by several veterans asking to extend the hours of veteran service office. And so I worked with Justin, probably in next year's budget, it's going to cost you about $3,500 or $4,000 to have four, I mean, have four days veteran service officer. Right now, we've, currently, we're just having 20 hours, is what we was having. So we've hired both of them, if anybody's got any questions. If not, we'll move on to safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just waiting on ambulance any day now to be put back in her fleet to when it was wrecked, and that's, other than that, I have Dustell's report.
Thank you. County correctional partnership?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting, and at the meeting, we did discuss the building. Jackie was telling us that there's a number of leaks in the last couple of weather systems that we've had, where it's starting to leak. We actually contacted Building and Grounds. I think they're going to be looking into it here in the very short. We were excited to also hear that the medical contracts that we approved in last month, they're actually going to start a little bit sooner than expected. Start date of February the 1st on that, so we're extremely excited about that happening and helping get that medical under control and straightened out. He has 11 vehicles that he surplused out. Those can be bought on GOV deals, so there's a number of different vehicles, obviously, that was there. Population, we're holding pretty steady around the 232 for the day. There was 43 females, 189 males, and there was 17 TDOC. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Yes. All right, we move right on down to new business. That'll be the next item on the agenda, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Cotton. He's going to have several ways.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to move funds out of salary line items into contracted services for the contracting of fire marshal services for the county. We'll be taking our previous part-time fire marshal and putting him on contract in lieu of continuing him as an hourly employee. This will increase our coverage, save us some money in the long run, and it's a temporary basis until the new codes person is hired and gets their fire marshal certification.
Motion approved. Second by Mr. Hilton. Does anybody have any questions? If no one has no questions, we'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
It passes 23 to 0. We'll move to item number two. Mr. Cotton?
This is an amendment to establish both revenue and the expenditure line items for the CDBG that we accepted earlier this year for the childcare grant through the Upper Cumberland Development District.
Got a motion by Mr. Stouts. Second by Mr. Hilton. I do want to say that all this grant is initiated through the Upper Cumberland and the county. This is total money funded by the Upper Cumberland. There's no county funds being used here, and they also picked who got the proceeds of this grant. Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
It passes 23 yes. We'll move on to item number three. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to appropriate funds from a restricted fund balance in order to allow the general sessions to purchase a new printer.
I got a motion by Mr. England, second by Mr. Hilton. Everybody have any questions? If nobody has any questions, we'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
It passes 23 to 0. We'll move on to item number four. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a highway budget amendment to appropriate funds out of fund balance, and we'll recover upcoming equipment and repair costs.
Got a motion by Mr. Hilton, second by Mr. Savage. Any questions? If no one has questions, we'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
It passes 23-0. We'll move to item number five. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a school budget, general purpose budget amendment to transfer funds from a salary line item, which is 116, into a services line item. We're moving $77,000. Beginning of the budget year, we expected to be paying these funds starting in January out of employee line items, but we continued our MOU with TCAT, and we're going to continue paying it as we had in the first part of the year out of contracted service line.
I got a motion by Gary Prater, second by Mr. Dotson. Does anybody have any questions? If no one has questions? Do you have some?
I can vote on this, Brett.
Robert?
I figured so when I saw career and technical education program, and I'm a CT teacher.
What do you teach?
At the high school.
Yeah, you can vote.
Thank you.
Clerk, now Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
It passes 23-0. We'll move to item number six. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an appropriation memo to appropriate additional bond funds from the 2019 B issue, of which prior to this memo, we had $1,546,000 remaining unencumbered. This would be to go towards the repairs and replacement of the cooling tower at the courthouse.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bell. Second. Got a second by Mr. Taylor. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if anybody has talked to Matt Mill Electric to see if TVA has any additional funds to go on this.
Uh, I don't know if, I don't think anybody has, because we're kind of in a time crunch. They've got us on, they've got it down to 10 weeks, but they first started out 18 weeks. And there's no air conditioning at all at the courthouse if, if we don't get this tower fixed.
The only reason I ask is because my wife works there at Matt Mill Electric, and she was asking around today about that. And they was telling her, Mr. Boyd and all them thought that TVA had some extra funds to go for some-
I will call in the morning, if that's all right. And I'll check on if there is. We'll see if we can utilize those funds, if that'll be okay. Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, we'll take care of it. If nobody else has any more questions, we'll ask Clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
It passes 23-0. Now we move on to item number seven. Mr. Colerole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The extension committee has four vacancies that we need to fill. Three will be reappointments, and one will be new. We nominate Michael Bell for his third term. It's a two-year commitment. Vicky Bolden will be a new term. It'd be her first term, two-year commitment. Marvin Lusk, it'd also be his third term, a two-year commitment. And Cole Taylor will be his second term, two-year commitment. Other current members of the committee are Carl D. Bolden, Philip Prater, and Ginger Wanamaker. And I make a motion that we accept these names.
Got a second by Mr. Ron Lee. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, it passes. We'll move on to the notaries, approval of the notaries.
This is the list for the notaries. Casey Bettencourt, Wallace Dean Blakenship III, Estella Bustas, Emily Carter, John W. Duncan, Ross Garrison, Brittany Herriman, Jesus Salsito, Erin Jones, Harley Whitsett, Juan Flores, Becky Crawford, Nikki Crawford, Meredith Woodley, Wanda F. Cantrell, Dana Green, Christina S. Stanford, Elaine Allison, Chris Helen Rodriguez, Cara L. Youngblood, Marsha Scott, and Darlene Brown.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bell. Second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, pass unanimously. We'll move down to announcements. I've got, I would like to take a, take a moment to tell everyone about a great way to keep up with your county government. Visit WarrenCountyTN.gov. When the homepage comes up, you'll see the prompt to enter your email address and subscribe. Pick the topics you want to be notified about, such as county, full county commission meetings, committee meetings, county building closures, and more. It's free to subscribe, and all notifications will be sent to your email as soon as we send them out. Be in the know at WarrenCountyTN.gov. And I have one more announcement. Everybody wish Casey Owens a happy birthday.
Mr. Chairman, Joshua Roberts' grandfather passed away. I think he's in the house, and I think the funeral is Friday.
Keep that family in your prayers.
Also, I'd like to make, mention that the Fair Board is headed to state convention this weekend, represent Warren County and compete for state titles in both pageant and also representation of the fair. So everybody would be thinking of them as they're traveling.
All right. I hear a motion. I make a motion adjourned. I got a motion by Cole Taylor, a second by Mr. Dotson. All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned.